Today is Wednesday, January 8th, 2014. The time is 10:02. The meeting in Montague County Commission is called to order. Everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge their flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, right off the bat, this is first of the new year, 2014. We're up for nomination and election of a president for 2014.
I move Bill Bartolo.
I second. I will motion in the second.
I think we ought to discuss this.
There's nothing to talk about, all Texas too.
That's right.
I've got a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Congratulations.
Mr. President, you want to take the seat and run the meeting?
It's up to you. If you want to continue with this meeting, or if you want to trade, I'll trade, whatever you want to do. You're still in the seat.
Oh, trade.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, you can't have my fort.
I would take mine, I use mine.
Here, you can have your card.
Oh, my card.
Oh, I got Tic Tac.
Are you? There, make it a bit.
That's yours, Mr. President.
All phone calls now will be directed.
Oh, what's today?
State fright.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, number four, I guess.
Okay, we're on four. Let me get my Diane.
For the set of truple exonerations, there are 15 listings, 12,869.22, tax years 2012, 13. New share orders of January 8th, 2014, and state services rendered by the state for new sharing. There are no minutes. Purchase order, General County Fund, 151,794.73, 911 cash, 13,009.3328, Mason Dixon 934.76, assessment valuation, 1,0561.21, magistrate court, $63.30, 175,669.77, no bonds and no other divisions.
I move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Renetta.
Good morning.
I just have two reimbursement requests today. The first one is for the day report center for December of 2013, $19,101.92. And the second is for the emergency solutions grant program for RDVIC, Caritas House and the Bartlett House, for a total of $17,207.48.
Move for reimbursement for both of them.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Keep walking. Proclamation for national stalking awareness. We have someone here?
We should have. Nina? No? She said she would be here, we're gonna hold off on her.
Well, actually, she's supposed, whoever it is, supposed to be here 10:15, so we're a little ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Let's just continue, shall we? Tom Potts, is he here?
No. Won't be here until probably 10:30.
Okay, how about correspondence?
I have a request requisition for payment from the project fund for the Star City TIF. This is the, in the amount of $3,412.50 to third-party PEs for their entry project into Star City. Steptoe and Johnson, $685. CTO Engineering, $227.50. And the United Bank, $2,500. And it's been approved by Star City Council.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion for approval in the second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
This is an engagement letter from Piper Jaffray to do our, be our placement agent for the tax increment and special excise tax refund revenue bonus. I know this just came up today, I don't know if you want to, it's kind of standard.
Yeah, I read it, I mean, nothing unusual about it, it's just a selection. I don't know if we just want to approve it, or we need to discuss it, or what.
I think there's a need to clarify. We have a second letter too, rank from Cruz.
No, this is a different subject.
This is for the TIF.
This was a TIF one separately, right? Okay, so there's no problem with this.
This is just on the TIF, TIF project. And this was, this was selected by the entire group. All the group, we're just doing a confirmation of what the group had previously selected.
So we're open for a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion for approval in the second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll change the name on the signature line. And we have two letters from sheriff, he's here, he wants to speak to these. The new PEs, they are at the academy right now. Zachary, Zachariah Walker and Robert Anthony Amros. They're both new sheriff deputies, effective January 1st. Salary $2,679 per month, effective date 1/14, probationary period one year.
Hi Sheriff.
Mr. President, congratulations on your appointment, or, or election, again. Very briefly, Diane mentioned most everything that I needed to mention, but the reason they're not here today is we were very fortunate, and Chief Palmer has a, has a connection at the State Police Academy, so he was able to, to pull some strings and call in a couple favors and get them into the academy. And they start, both started academy on Monday, happy to announce that they both passed their physical agility test at the academy so they could stay. So, we're happy about that, but they'll be there for 14 weeks, and hopefully they'll both make it through fine, and we'll get them out on the road as soon as possible. They passed all the requirements, the eligibility requirements, psychological IQ test, everything else that was involved, our physical agility test to get to this point. So, we're just asking for approval of those hires.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion for approval in the second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations again.
Thank you.
Next, I have two letters. These are standard procedure for the audit, asking March Ashdown if there are any threatening litigation, litigation pending, they need to be aware of, and also asking the assessor confirm to them all major taxpayers who assess values equal 10% or more, total six. These are also for.
These are just approvals for signatures, right?
Yes.
And move that we approve these two letters relating to the audit.
Second.
Have a motion for approval in the second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Oh, this is semi-new, semi-old. On January 6th, the Office of Emergency Management requested the commission approve issuing a state emergency declaration for the county because it'd be bad weather. Through some conversations with all three of you, you agreed that that would be the best thing to do in case we need anything in the way of emergencies. I have been informed by Mr. Wolf that you can lift this this morning, so you're actually kind of confirming what you did and then lifting it also today. They have served only three residents that needed shelter, but they were open and available in case anyone needed anything.
Well, it's a moment over there, it's still 3 degrees.
It's gonna get warmer. It's gonna get better today.
Are we gonna put that much trust in the weatherman that it's actually gonna warm up?
It is.
Yeah, it's already spilling.
Do you need a motion on that?
We need a motion to, to confirm the state of an emergency, and then we probably need a second motion to lift it.
Yes.
Okay. So I move that we confirm the state of emergency as previously established due to the cold weather.
I second, and I also, since we second, oh, well, go ahead, I second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And I just want to please send a thank you, and maybe from all three of us, because the reports were interesting. I really was appreciative of who used it, and also the power outages. So I like that, and I just, please tell them I'm very appreciative of sending those reports.
Let me add on to, I think Mike was very proactive with the situation, and sometimes it's, you're better to prepare for an emergency and then not have it than you are not to be prepared and have it.
Right. I believe he's coming in next week to give you a full report on that.
Yeah, and just, just for public information, it's, the state of emergency allows us, although we didn't close anything, what it does is it allows us to collect, get the resources, collect federal resources and state resources in the event, as the president just pointed out, in the, in the event that there is a major emergency. And it's always better to do that ahead of time, too. All right, so I guess we're gonna trust in the weatherman that it's gonna warm up tonight, huh? So I'll move that we lift this state of emergency.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
It's a good course, fine.
End of the year report. Diane, you wanna sort of summarize it?
It's a great year. Well, Bobby has a share that he's going to do of what his department has done.
Of facilities.
In improving facilities, construction, all the money that's been saved because of the efforts of Bobby and staff.
Let me preface something before you get into that report. This is my beginning of the sixth year that I've been on this commission. And I think this past year's probably been the busiest year out of those five years that I've been on this commission. And it's been aggressive, it's, as far as building and grounds, I don't think that we have any precedent that would take this commission and the county to the extent that we went with construction and renovations and those yet to come, because there's a lot more to come. And it's probably appropriate this time, too, to thank Commissioner Cowan for his leadership over the past year. One of the things that I think we benefited from was his occupational specialty of being an attorney, who helped us through some interpretation of different things at different times. And of course, the new member, Tom Bloom, Tom has certainly added a new dimension to this commission, and I think we're better off for it. And I think, although we don't need to dwell on the past, we need to learn from the past, and I think we need to recognize the contributions that have came in the past up to this year and look forward to the future. Now, that being said.
Well, this is, is put together basically based on month-by-month activities, agenda items, projects that the commission was involved in. I think probably the most important, too, have been the continued work towards the subtle building renovations, and later today we're going to be accepting a bid, hopefully on that. The other being the ballpark project in the TIF district that was accomplished early on in March, when the legislature finally agreed to do the excise tax district. Another is the, hopefully, replacement of the Hartman Bridge, we're still in the process of working with the BOH on that, Phil Makers looking at the current agreement, see if it's acceptable to us. We've gone with TV coverage, YouTube, and on, on the kind of close site. And that's, I think, a great step. Personally, I've had a lot of people comment to me that they watch it, they appreciate it, and it's good to know that they have, they can see what's going on, and if there's anything they're concerned about, they can come in and talk about it.
I also like it because they can say, "I heard you say," not, "Someone told me that you said." Plus, it's better for us because we know exactly what we said.
Right. Anything?
Can we put this on, on our website so that people have a chance to, to visit that and review it?
Sure.
Because there's a lot more there than what I think we want to get into.
Does the media have a copy of this, or we can get them a copy?
Probably in their package.
Okay.
I would, I would point this out. The, each, each one of the, each one of the listings are not an end of itself. Oftentimes, it is either the culmination of months of work and preparation, or the beginning of months of work and preparation to reach the ultimate culmination. So, it, it's a great working document, and I, I want to thank you for taking the time and effort to, to you and the entire staff, to, to put this information together. It's valuable for us, it's valuable for all the, all the people that work here, it's also valuable for the citizens to see the direction that our county is going. Thank you for that.
The, the two issues I'd just like to expand on is, first is that I'm thrilled, as I said, as I told the TV station, that the working relationship between the three of us, I think we've got it very clear that one person isn't going out and making a decision without the other two. In fact, it's really helped us a couple times when there've been some rumors or comments made, and the working relationship we have, and I think the public now knows that they need to meet with all three of us to get something accomplished. And the second thing is the excitement of this TIF district, when I said, "The whole state is watching us." And I really believe this $200 million development program, not only that will develop the other side of the interstate, but also getting an interchange, and also getting a baseball diamond, without the cost to the citizens where the building is paying, the tax is paying for itself, and the money isn't going back down to Charleston. So I think those two things, that is, like you said, the beginning of what's gonna be a great future and outlook for Montague County, but I did want to stress those two things.
Bobby, you had a report, too.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll put this together here, this is my hand and mouth, I don't want to forget the, the maintenance guys, they, they save money on a day-to-day basis keeping all these buildings going and getting everything together.
Thank you.
About two years ago, we reorganized and put a construction crew on. So, I can show you the bills that were paid there and the jobs that we did, but there was, it's job to job there, and there were 23 projects we did, estimated cost of $446,158.40. And our cost we had in it was $194,582. So that's savings at the county to get these projects done of $251,576. So, the man hours and everything are figured in there, but the benefits on no side for the prevailing rate or our side were figured in. So, it was just the cost and the overhead and the markup for the profit.
That's a quarter million dollars, that's a lot of tax savings.
It wasn't as much as we did the previous year, but, you know, that, we had a, a bid on that, so we knew exactly what that price was. So, we didn't inflate the, the cost to, we could've probably put more profit in, you know, for a contractor that would've come in to do this project, but we didn't do that. So that's just a little bit of information to ship with the.
Please pass our thanks on to them. I mean, what, what has come about when we first talked about putting together an organization that actually could save a lot of tax dollars, has come to fruition. And it, it really, it really pales in comparison for what, what other entities such as the state and federal is trying to do to save dollars. I mean, you're saving dollars each and every day. And, and I want to give you my personal thanks as well for your leadership in that department.
And you can see on there, it goes from a total reorganization and a total redo on a house at Mason Dixon to a shoot house in Electric for the sheriff's shooting range out there, they have not had power, so they can do whatever they need if they want to.
No, I'm just appreciative, I think, I think this is great, and that, also, I think, get that report also, if you could, to the media, too, so that way they at least see it, so they can see the savings of what we're actually doing, or actually, what you are actually doing, and we're benefiting, and the whole community's benefiting from.
I, I think we're fortunate in Montague County, not just for the staff of the county commission, but we're fortunate in terms of our elected officials. We, we are very, I don't want to call it lucky, we are fortunate, I guess is the best word to describe it, that we have elected officials that are experienced, that are competent, that have the public interest foremost in their mind, and, and have the courage of their own convictions, and yet will cooperate fully to serve the public interest. So I think we all need to, everybody that contributes, there's an old saying that I often like to quote, and that is, "The accomplishments of one are never the results of the efforts of one." It's always more than one person that helps accomplishments get done. And I think we need to reflect that we have a pretty good county government in Montague County. It's alive and well, and should meet the future head-on, and serve the best interest of the public without any question. New business, holiday schedule.
Could I talk, I want to bring up two unfinished.
Oh, go ahead.
There are two issues. One that, one issue that I'd like to bring up, just so you're aware, by the end of this month, I will be meeting with deputy and the lawyers to, to talk about the access to the building after hours. And in front of me, I have a report, and I'd rather refer it to the president, since you did the report, to just give some information so the public sees that we're taking this very seriously and we're moving forward on this. So if you want to, Bill, say the report that you just showed me.
Yeah, I, just briefly, I gave Tom a copy of this, and I'm gonna give this copy to Eldon to look at, probably ought to furnish Carrie a copy as well. But what I did is Bobby provided me with some data of access over the past 77 days, from October 1, 2013, to December 16, 2013. As of that time, we have a record of 30 lawyers who authorized for after-hours access. 15, 15 of those 30 have not used after-hour access at all during the 77-day period. 15 lawyers have used access cards during this period. One lawyer used it 14 times in October, 14 times in November, and 6 times in December. A second lawyer, 11 in October, 5 in November, 3 in December. A third lawyer, 6 times in October, 7 times in November. And then a fourth lawyer, and what we have is four lawyers have used the access cards 87 times during the 77 days. There are three other lawyers have used their access card, a total of 10, 11, 13 times, or a total of 33 times during the 77 days. Of the 26 remaining lawyers with access cards, eight, eight lawyers have used their cards from 1 to 6 times, for a total of 21 times. 15 lawyers have not used their access cards at all during the 77-day period. So in summary, we have approximately 15 lawyers using their cards, 15 lawyers not using their cards at all during the 77-day period. The four lawyers that have used their cards have used it for a total of 87 times, more than the remaining lawyers of eight using it, for a total of 21 times. And 15 lawyers not using their cards at all during the 77-day period. It's also noted that four of the biggest users of after, before-hours access, only two visits were made on Sundays, and only four visits on Saturdays during the 77-day period, at noted times on record during this period of time. Based upon records and access, it would appear restricting after-hours access would only have a significant effect on four lawyers, and possibly some effect on three others for a total of seven lawyers out of 30 that have authorized access. Impact on the other 23 would range from minimal to none. One of the things, I sort of went through and broke down the data, and it's interesting that, and I don't have totals for you, but the majority of use after hours is in the morning, from, between 7 and 8. The, and, and some of these times that these lawyers have used their access card has been during regular office hours. Now, and, and another example to give you is that, for example, this Saturday, we have an entry of 338, 339, 345, 345, 346, the same lawyer.
No.
So, so you have to be careful how you interpret this, because I don't know if the lawyer kept forgetting something in the card, had to run out and come back in, run out, come back in, but it sort of misleads you in terms of how much access was needed during that period of time. But this is just some information, some data, so that we can look at it and try to make a very informed decision on what to do about it. The one thing, Carrie, I just to mention, is that it's my understanding that the renewals of these are supposed to come up in January, if they haven't already taken place. But I think we need to make sure that we just let them know that we're looking at it, and no one really knows at this point what we're gonna do about it. And we're gonna have some more discussion, and we certainly want your input. I think your input is critical to this issue.
In fact, and that's what I was gonna say, since, I mean, I know if they come up and they want to issue it, I don't want to stop anything, but maybe if, if you issue those, say it's conditional on whatever the compromise comes out to be. So that way everyone knows ahead of time, and hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have enough information to make, make it available so that everyone benefits. The concern, again, is that we're talking 30 lawyers, of which roughly 15 are using it out of 400, and we're leaving the building open 24 hours a day for access. And that's one of the major concerns we're having, and we just want to make sure that we do the best for the, for the citizens of Montague County, so.
The one effect that this really has, and it really came to light on the break-in that we had, is that when you think in terms of security and, of facilities, you think that one of the prerequisites is perimeter security. And this building has no perimeter security. And as long as we have access, we can't, at least I don't know of a way that we can instill perimeter security, unless we redesign the alarm system for perimeter security. Is it worth doing that? I don't know. That's something that needs revisited. Do we need perimeter security? I can tell you that in the security industry, that that's a prerequisite, if you're gonna have any kind of security at all, that you have perimeter security. And then the next step is intrusion security. So we can't really have either one of those effectively, as long as we have people coming in and out of the building at, at various times, unless we have a system that's designed to accommodate that. And whether we need to do that or not, who knows? I mean, that's what we're trying to do, is to make an informed decision. But I can tell you that our card access proved valuable with getting data and information on who was coming in and what times, and so we did get some benefit from that.
So, okay, and just conclude, when I find out when the meeting is, I'll give you a call, okay? Sammy, make sure that you'll be able to make it, too. And again, I don't want to be, it's so restrictive, but I just want to, maybe we can tighten some things up, but I think that's all we're wanting to do on that issue. The second issue, since we're talking, I know, and it's under Diane's report of discussion of, I don't see how you had it down here, discussion of prosecuting attorney asking for a new employee, so I was just gonna bring this under. going to bring this under unfinished business. And not that I'm going to act on it, but I'm going to ask if you could send one more letter back to her. And this is what I'm going to ask, which would be, I have a concern, of adding another person in the middle of a year. But, you know, coming fiscal year, that may be a whole, you know, I would like to see that the possibility, we would consider that. But could we have a documentation of actually where that individual's office would be, what the cost would be, if there's any additional cost for having that office and supplies and so on. And third, if it was possible that there were two votes, and again, I say if, that during the fiscal year, and the other two people are here right now to discuss this, and Marsha wanted it earlier, would her office pay for it a couple months before the fiscal year? So that's one of the questions. Like if we waited until the fiscal year, but she felt a need that would have to be before, would that office pay for that salary? So that's what I'd like to throw out to the other two members, since, and we keep tossing around, but that's a clarification I'd like to have. But I am very leery of adding a new position until at least the fiscal year. I'd rather throw it out that way. If, Eldon, you want to say anything?
Eldon, you may comment on the two issues.
Yeah.
Access in the request.
I'm enjoying not being present.
I can tell.
I think we just need to, I think it's good to get this information on the access and I think we just need to proceed as we did on that. I appreciate what Commissioner Bloom's requesting. I have a hesitancy of formalizing too much stuff and demanding people write letters, this, that, and that. You know, those are the kind of things that, I think Commissioner Bartola, I think you're the ones that came up with the work session. Those are the kind of things that we set up work sessions for, to say, so that we don't bury a bunch of trees. We just say, hey, we got these issues, we'd like you to find a few moments, come down to the work session, give us a response to it. I have problems with adding people just routinely outside of the planned budget year. If you're a department and you've got plans, I understand that sometimes there's emergencies and things rise that you didn't expect. But normally, you should be able to make your plan for the next year. And you plan your budget as such. But to, you know, we just added, what, two or three people in the last 18 months to that department. And I understand, I know standards are needed and all, but I would agree with you on that, that it should be the exception and fully justified to be changing your budget substantially during your budget year. Your plan should be towards the next budget year. That's all I got to say.
Well, I'm more than willing to modify it. I just would like a clarification because that seemed to be an issue that we brought up, but we never got an answer on, of where that person's going to be. I mean, you know, that was a concern we brought up. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, we can address that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
She has two offices over there now, and she thought that we were taking those offices when we were putting Mark's people over there.
Okay.
And once we explained to her that she still had those two offices, she was fine. That would be the one office for the other prosecutor that she was asking for.
So the secretary, the secretary...
The secretary's office is upstairs. Marsha didn't even know that she was using that office just on a part-time.
Oh, I thought the two offices down there, the secretary was in one.
The way I understand it, that girl has an office upstairs.
Oh.
So then there is available, there is space.
To my knowledge, yeah.
Okay.
Which she told me yesterday.
Okay.
There we saved a tree.
Okay, that's fine. We'll get, yeah, I'll be quiet.
So we'll have further discussion on it in the work session?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Did anyone come in on the proclamation for National Stalking Awareness Month?
Okay.
Okay, Tom's here. Okay, Tom?
Yeah, Tom's coming here once I get arrested.
Stalking, nothing.
On the record, too.
Charleston trip, yeah, the good stuff.
Who presented the request for stalking awareness?
Maybe the person forgot or something.
Nina Minima, I just asked her Monday if she'd be here and she said yes she would.
Oh, okay.
I guess we could probably still go ahead and approve that proclamation.
I guess we could, yeah.
If I've got a motion.
Stalking's not a joking-type thing, but it just struck me funny that she's not here or make sure she's all right.
What do you want to do, this tabled or do we want to go ahead and proceed with the proven proclamation?
Why don't we go ahead and take care of Tom Potts and then do that, and do that sort of the last thing in case she does happen to show up.
Okay. Good morning.
I've given you a letter that kind of summarizes. I don't know if you want to take a minute to review it?
Can you just sort of summarize it for us?
Yeah. As you know, we took our bids several weeks ago, and we had eight bids. And we had, average bid was 18 million, we kind of added them all together and divided by the number of bidders. The low bid, the apparent low bid, was Messero Corporation out of Pittsburgh. Their bid was 17 million, $133,000. That was the low bid. And they had a couple, we had a couple of add alternates which brought their total to 17 million, 271. Immediately after the bid, Bob Doyle copied all the bids. We took them back to our office. We looked at the paperwork that was provided. Everything that was submitted was per the specifications. They had all of the documents that were required, so we don't find any problem there at all. If you know anything about Messero, Messero's done a large amount of work. They're out of Pittsburgh, they've done a large amount of work and are working for WVU. They did the basketball facility. There are two projects that they're working on right now, 85, 95,000 square feet. I personally have worked with Messero from 1994. I did two, I've done two projects with them, with the West Virginia Correctional Facility Authority. I spoke with, as you know, the second lowest bid, kind of changing the tune here for a second. The second lowest bid or the next highest bid was $654,000 higher than Messero. There were four bidders that were kind of in that same range. That was kind of the middle of the pack. So I called Messero with a question about where they still honor their bid, given the difference. And Mr. Josh Wells, who is their chief estimator, said they're very committed to the bid. They don't feel like they left anything on the table. They're anxious and desirous to be awarded the contract. So, and the other thing that I'll mention is, if you recall, our estimate of July of last year was 16,900. And in fact, their contract, the bid specifications required, we had a in-contract contingency, construction contingency of $200,000. So if you take that contingency and add it to our estimate, it was right on point. So we think that, you know, I obviously can't speak for the commission, we think things on budget. You have a good contractor who's qualified, that they're working in this area. They have a significant presence, we've worked with them. And so we find no reason not to award to Merrick and Messero and would recommend that, you know, if it's the commission's will, that they would issue a notice of intent to proceed or a notice of intent to award to Messero and then move forward with the project.
How long, how long is, this issue has come up when it comes to the financing? How long is the bid good for?
90 days.
From the date they submitted?
That's correct.
Okay, so we got what, two more months or something? And along that line, if it takes us 90 days to get financing, what kind of money do we need to give them upfront to get them started?
Yeah, there's no, there's no upfront payment. What you will get is, their first application for payment will probably, probably be within the first, within the first month. It's probably going to be several hundred thousand dollars for mobilization or something like that for them. So that's, that's as close to a get-started cost as you would have something in that.
Well, that's what I want to try to figure, because that was a question the financial people were asking us, is saying, well, you know, can you, you know, take this bid and can you start the project without the financing? Because we go through one method, they were talking about 90 days, another method was talking about 60 days plus 90 days.
There. I want to deviate from procedures a little bit. Are you with Messero, sir?
Yeah, I'm with Messero Corporation.
Okay. Tom, do you want to give him a chance to comment on this?
Yeah, I'm actually Chris Davis. I'd be the project manager, your representative for Messero Corporation, and answer your question. And your question is, Tom, right? It's probably, the only thing being billed within the first two months would be a little bit of mobilization and some of the bond costs. I figured, like you said, probably a hundred thousand dollars, but that wouldn't be billed for probably a month or two out from the start.
Well, we just want to make sure, because we got, we're doing the financing on the same track and we're trying to move it ahead at the same time. But we'd like to get you started as quickly as possible so that we're trying to figure out what else.
Would be minimal cost.
I just had a question. If we do a letter of intent to proceed, then if we could negotiate with them and say, you know, only so much payment, and once we get our bonding, then we could catch up. If we could do something, after we get...
That's what I was thinking.
We can negotiate like we talked about, you know, pay the mobilization and then say, you know, our funding is going to be available at such and such a date, and then we could catch up on the AIA document payments.
All of these details, we would be able to iron out before we entered into the contract, correct?
That's correct.
Once we pick a contractor, then we can negotiate.
Okay. The one, this is probably an appropriate time for me to, just to make sure that everything is disclosed, is that my security company has done work for Messero at the airport. And I don't see any conflict of interest at all with that. And, but I just, for public disclosure, I just want people to be aware that I have done, my company has done business with Messero. Not that I believe that it will have.
Was this the airport project?
Yes.
Yeah, I was actually the project manager on that.
Yeah. I don't think I've even talked, had a conversation with you.
I was scared for a second.
So I think most of the contact has been with my brother Ernie, and he's handled most of those transactions. But for the sake of full public disclosure, I just want to make that a matter of record.
One simple question, and I think it's a positive one, is if we move forward and we get it worked out, and I'll report to you, when do you think you would be able to start moving forward, you know, general terms, if we were to prove this today, moving forward?
We've talked as soon as 30 days, for the first part of February.
Okay.
We could start doing something on site if all the documentation is in order and everything is approved.
Is that...
Yeah, it'll take them a week or two to get their bonds and insurance in place.
Right.
And then you issue the AIA document, which is the formal owner-contractor agreement, along with a notice to proceed, and then it would take them probably a couple of weeks to mobilize.
Okay. I think if we're done with the discussion, I think we're open for a motion.
Yeah, I can't, I can't help but do it. I just got to do this. You know I've been waiting for this. Tom thought I was going to do it the last time when the bids came in. When we bought this building, I was opposed to buy this building because regardless what the judges said, it was going to be more than 9, 10, 12 million dollars. I said it was going to cost between 19 million and 24 million. And I had a judge stand right back there and poo-poo me as an idiot that I didn't know what I was talking about. Let me ask you, Mr. Potts, who's right?
You're on the record, be careful.
This is for the record.
Sir, the math appears to be...
There's a politician's answer.
17.1 million dollars. So all project costs, it would appear that the project cost is 20 million dollars, so.
Why don't we just say, Eldon, you were right?
That's all I needed to hear. Thank you. Thank you. Regardless of what the judge said, I knew what I was talking about.
Is our motion on the floor to accept it?
I move we approve the, to continue the process with the notice of, what's it called? Notice of intent to award.
That's correct.
And do we want to add the two alternates?
To Messero Corporation.
Well, if you want to make a price in there, make sure you add the two alternates on there. But we don't have to do that until we get the AIA documents.
Well, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Congratulations. We look forward to getting a new renovated building.
I'm excited about it, but I just had to say, I knew what I was talking about. Two and a half years ago, I knew what I was talking about.
Anything else, Tom, that we need to do?
What's it?
Well, thank you.
We appreciate your work now.
Were you giving us like monthly updates roughly or something like that to just where they are or to Bobby, so we know, or how's that?
Sure. What, the commission would issue the letter. What I would probably do is come back and through Bobby, I would probably, I would give you the, provide the AIA contract to be signed and request the notice to proceed to be issued. Obviously, all that's contingent upon your, the financing being in place and all that. So we'll work back and forth to be able to make that move forward.
Then Tom, to answer your question, there is job meetings every two weeks.
Okay.
The other thing, Tom, I know we're paying you for your services, but sometimes there's things that money doesn't buy, and you've been very patient with this county on this project, considering as many fingers it was involved in the issue and re-involved in the issue and finally getting it ironed out. And I think we have an acceptable project at this point. And just want to thank you for your services.
You're welcome. Appreciate you saying that. Is that on the record?
Yes, that's on the record.
And we all agree. We all agree.
But not only that, but the actual, what you recommend.
You and your entire staff, you've all really come forward for, for us. We really contributed.
Well, it's truly, it's been our pleasure. You've been a, really honestly, you've been a good commission to work for. I find, you know, Bob Doyle's just incredibly responsive and we've enjoyed, you know, just working with him and with all of you. So it's been, it really has been our pleasure.
I'm amazed that, I mean, you're right with the 200,000, you were right on. I mean, usually, and I've been dealing with the school system, and let's just say the bid is then usually several million dollars over. I'm just amazed that it was right on and that says a lot to your organization, you put that on the record.
Hopefully, we'll all be able to stand down there dedication day and reflect back on the project.
Yeah, there's a lot to get through and hopefully we're all as pleased at that point as we appear to be right now.
Yeah, and in our year-end list, it will show that we passed a motion on notice of intent. It doesn't show the months of work that got us here and are going to be ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone came in on the proclamation?
National Stalking Awareness Month?
Yeah, it's written here if...
Why don't I read it if it's all right?
Why don't you read it and then let's go ahead and approve it?
National Stalking Awareness Month, January 2014. Whereas under the laws of all 50 states, the District of Columbia and federal government, stalking is a crime. And whereas 3.4 million people over the age of 18 are stalked each year in the United States, and nearly 75% of victims are stalked by someone they know. And whereas three in four women killed by an intimate partner had been stalked by their intimate partner. And whereas many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. And whereas many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs and obtaining protection orders. And whereas many stalkers use increasingly sophisticated devices such as global positioning systems, cameras, and computer spyware to track their victims. And whereas there is a need for great public awareness about the nature, criminality, and potential lethality of stalking. And whereas criminal justice systems can enhance... And whereas criminal justice systems can enhance their responses to stalking by regular training of law enforcement officers and aggressive investigation and prosecution of the crime. And whereas laws and public policies must be continually adapted to keep pace with new tactics used by stalkers. And whereas communities can better combat stalking by adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations and by providing more and better victim services. And whereas the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials and concerned citizens throughout Montague County in the United States to observe National Stalking Awareness Month and to promote the two thousand fourteen theme. Know it, stop it, name it. Now for, now therefore, the Montague County Commission does hereby proclaim stalking, January two thousand fourteen, stalking awareness month in Montague County and applauds the efforts of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national community organizations and private sector supporters for their efforts in promoting awareness about stalking. And I so move.
I second.
I have a motion and a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Reports from county commissioners, Tom.
Oh, did we want to do the new bid? Did we do the?
Yeah, we did new bid. Oh, the holiday schedule, okay. Yeah, I just, as a note on the holiday schedule, I just looked here. We have fifteen full days and two half days for next two thousand fourteen year. You should have all, each of you have a copy.
We got a copy.
Do I have a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now reports from the county commissioners, Tom.
Okay, first, congratulations on being president. And basically, I just like to say I'm looking forward to working this year, not only with having one year of experience, but I think we've accomplished a lot and I think, you know, what we're going to look forward to in the future for the citizens of Montague County, but also with what we had to deal with, with extenuating circumstances and problems in the past. They're behind us. You won't have to look at an empty chair anymore and I look forward to being here and working with everyone. Thank you.
It's one advantage I'll have over you. You kept looking at an empty chair.
I kept asking his opinion. I was just amazed at how many times he agreed with me.
How many times? I thought you were going to say how many times I was actually quiet.
Eldon, you have anything?
I, I got, I got one thing here. I'd like to ask the commission to approve this letter. Mr. Bobby Nicholas is working to raise funds for the WVU Children's Hospital. And this is just a letter expression of interest and support that the Montague County Commission supports the WVU Children's Hospital and their efforts to secure additional funding for the vital programs to serve the needs of city children in my county and all of us. So that, that was one thing I would, that, that asked and I didn't have a chance to get it on the agenda, but, but I, I would like, I think it's just, it doesn't commit anything other than just that we support the Children's Hospital.
Have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The only other thing is we got Montague County Day tomorrow. We're going to head down there for that. The, I think there's going to be a good bit of turnout. Have we got any latest figures as to how many people are going to ride the bus tomorrow? But I, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to that. That will be our first ever Montague County Day. And I am going to, I'm going to try to see as many people as we can. And Tom's going down, Diane's going down. I, I hope that we can get a lot done in this legislative session regardless of what everyone seems to say that it's election year, you don't get anything done. I'm going to, I'm going to go down and push with the, with the endorsement or support of the rest of the commission, push our agenda items. Everything from, from assessors to giving more authority to county commissions and all. So that's, that's my major focus right now.
Thank you. Anything else, Tom? Uh, elected officials, Carrie?
Yes, sir. Congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you.
For the year that you want to spend as commission president. It is going to be an election year. Candidate filing begins next week, January thirteenth. And in preparation for that, there is one, I need a motion from the commission for an unexpired term for our surveyor position to be placed on the ballot. It's a constitutional office. No one ran for the position two thousand twelve. Commission has not appointed anybody. The unexpired term must appear on the ballot, but by code, it needs an order of the commission to do so. So if I, and I need to publish it in the newspapers.
That's what throws me, and that's something that we probably need to deal with, with the legislature too, you know? There's so many things like this. As I recall, and I read it some time ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but it says we shall appoint someone, that there shall be a county surveyor. And I know prior commissioners said, well, we won't have one. Well, the code says you shall have one, you know? So that's something that probably needs to be cleaned up. But in the meantime, I think we need to put it on the ballot. So I would move that we do that.
I second.
I have a motion and a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
It is, I'm not certain if the constitution says shall or may that it is a constitutional office that they would. I'm not certain what the legislator's feeling is on that. I know that they did change the law in two thousand and twelve. It used to be that anyone who ran for or was appointed to that position did not have to be a licensed surveyor. If they were not a licensed surveyor, they could only work for the, bless you. They could only do work for the county. They could not do any outside work. Now, in two thousand and twelve, the legislature did pass a law that anyone who is a candidate for or elected to that position or appointed by the commission must be a licensed surveyor. So that, that was a change. Also, sir, I will be seeing you after the meeting to get several signatures now that you're the commission president. I did a couple of things. I would like to be included on any work session that you have in regard to the after-hours access. I am interested in looking at the reports that you have. I think that there are a lot of issues that maybe the commission is not aware of in regards to that and I would certainly would like to be included in any discussions that you have. As far as the holiday schedule, the two days down there that you refer to as the half-days, those are actually just for state employees. So I think if the county is going to take those half-days off, I think the commission would have to approve those to be closed.
That's what we just did. It says in the code, that's what we just did. We, we adopted that schedule, which was the half-days. It says in the code that it's a half-day for state employees and the county commission can adopt those half-days if they choose to do so. And that, and that's what we just did by putting it on our holiday schedule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, anything?
I just got the approval back from the PBC regarding all the interns we've done for our field duty today. So we've been offering positions to those candidates and I'm hoping to be able to put them down on the list just to bring them forth next week so the commission can meet this group of people that we've hired, so.
Now, you still had a meeting with the PBC or whatever?
Yeah, and actually, we've been working on that and Chris Liller, our one appraiser, she's put together a real nice presentation and that I, I think she's going to represent.
There, there's one question, I haven't had a chance to discuss it with anybody, but sometimes when I get free time, I have some thoughts and get a little creative. And, and the question is this. The state has, has informed us that property assessment should be at ninety percent or a hundred, up to between ninety and a hundred and ten, ten percent. First of all, I would like a, a response to, if we're going to appraise property a hundred and ten percent, then that's in violation of appraising property at, at fair market value. Second of all, if we can appraise it at ninety percent, then we shouldn't appraise it at full value. So it impacts the appraisal system. And where do they expect us to go with that? In all fairness, I said this before, one of the things, state tax department tends to concern itself with regulations and rules and everything else. We tend to concern ourselves with the people or the county. And, and I just think it's not fair to taxpayers to say, you've got a variance of twenty percent on how much you're going to pay in taxes. Now, if, if we can assess property in this county at ninety percent, then that's what we ought to do. If, if, and I'm not real sure the state tax department has the authority to, to say assess property at a hundred and ten percent. I think that issue needs to come back to them and needs addressed because in the Board of Equalization Review, that could be an issue for us. But I just wanted to share that with you and if you could just maybe try to get us some information on that. Thank you.
If I may, do you know when that, the, the meeting's going to be?
Next Thursday. It's Thursday in Flatwoods, nine to five.
You still want me to go?
If you would like to go with us, I mean, Chris has developed a nice little presentation. I have no idea when we're going to be on because normally the way they've done it is they take the three-year deficiencies, the first, four. So we're going to be there at nine and we may not get on the docket until four. So it's one of those things that there's no set time. They just go down, or at least they did last year.
Well, see, what Commissioner Martello brought up is the key point that, that the state tax department just can't seem to grasp. They're tied to this computer system. And their ninety percent is based on this getting within ninety percent of what this computer spits out. But the computer spits out what you put in. And I realized that, that first year when we had all those problems with, with this computer system because the only new sales they had was in a selected higher priced area. And because the people that were analyzing those sales did not fully understand the financial difference between Wadestown, Mainsville, Chee, Cheek Lake, even Greystone or First. They didn't understand the difference. They could not put the proper factors in. And then we have a state department there threatening to deny the county money because you're not in ninety percent of an artificial number because it spits out of the computer.
Yeah, and what we're working on now is, of course, you know, Chris and Chris being new with us, we're reviewing all the stuff, of course, the times and everything, but we're working through and we've actually taken them out and looked at sections of the county so they get an idea. Chris Liller went with us last week and she did a lot of door-to-door, which is wonderful because, you know, you have an appraiser that's actually going to the doors and meeting with people to look over the sales. Because they were looking at sales reports, just asking, was it sold for this and that? And just trying to get a little idea of some of these neighborhoods. And yeah, for them, it's a good, just us taking them out. They're getting a look at it. It's not like they haven't seen areas similar to ours before because it's March and they've been in different sections. So they've got a good, getting a good grasp of things. I think this coming spring when they're out for that final go-around of the thirds, it's going to give them a better idea. I mean, because they're going to do mostly wards. There's four wards that they're doing in Morgan, I think, or the five districts that they're going to have this spring.
But the sales data is important.
Right.
But how you put it in the computer determines whether you're a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty. I mean, it, it was clear from, from the two thousand twelve border review and equalization that there was an artificial inflation rate of twenty to twenty-five percent. We were clearly above the fair market value at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty percent over the true value of property. And that comes back to the constitutional argument that I have. And that is who constitutionally decides the fair market value? A computer out of the state, uh, state tax department Charleston or this border review and equalization? I say the constitution says this border review and equalization.
And we're working, like I said, we've been working every day, a lot of hours just putting in, refocusing in on the stuff, getting stuff that's been in place from the current, which is as of December thirty-first and reviewing a bunch of stuff. So yeah, we're, we're headed in the right direction of where we need to be and we're taking everything in because it's, it's a different mindset on what we've got here, but.
Yeah, we truly believe that. And don't, and people that, people that haven't been in prior conversation might think we're at some sort of conflict with the assessor's office. We are not. We, we are, we are, have a shared opinion. The question is, is that how this commission can assist the assessor in, in warding off what we think are unfair attacks from the state tax department?
And we're doing the same on our end too.
I know we are.
By reviewing those properties and looking at that, you know, the changes need to be made. We're making those changes. And it's with our county being such a large county, it's going to take time to reclassify maybe some of the neighborhoods and putting in. What we want to do, our plan is to do what we want, and this was step one of our plan, was to bring things back into what we want to do. They're now reestablished to the outside, so. But yeah, I can give you details for Thursday.
I, I just would like to, if there's no problem, Mark, with, with Eldon going and you don't have any problem, I would really like to see you there because I think you can add a perspective to the discussion.
As a commissioner, yeah.
As a commissioner, plus historically.
Well, no, we talked about, we talked about the, they were working on the letter. We would like, we would like Eldon to go.
Yeah.
And because Chris was doing the presentation and he got that, that is feedback he can give off of that presentation. So it's kind of like.
I get back from Charleston, maybe we get together Friday or Monday.
Yeah, well, I'll see you down there in Charleston.
Oh, yeah, you're going to be down.
Yeah. You know, and the thing is, it's unique in a situation with Chris presenting because it really starts off unique because she was our monitor. So it's kind of like she's, she's presenting on what her mind worked, which is a nice thing to have. And it's nothing real major, it's just.
But, but for the record, I just want to echo what Eldon said is that we're not in conflict with the assessor's office. In fact, we, I think, would it be in agreement, we'd commend your efforts in, in the one year that you've been over there in that office and, and working together with the commission as, as well as the people in the county. I mean, you know, it was unheard of going out. You've got people going out door-to-door and actually seeing properties inside and outside and talking to the taxpayers. And, and that's what we're all about, is public service.
And I echo, and the thing I said about working with the commission. It's just, you know, for us, and I tell my staff, it's patience, you know? It's, we're not going to do anything overnight. We're going to research it and make sure, and we want to make sure what we're doing is doing correctly. And we're doing it right for the people. And that's what we've done this past year and we will continue. We will continue to get better. Thank you for your patience and cooperation with us.
Thank you. Okay. Department heads, and then I'll get to.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Diane, Bobby, Renetta, Jamie?
I congratulate you on your new election. I'd like to thank the past president for his leadership and thank the commission for all their continued support in the program of the services.
Janet?
Wait, put that down.
No one said condolences yet. Okay, we have a visitor, Pam Kraschinsky, who's with the Attorney General's Office, Patrick Morcy. Do you have any comment for us?
No, I want to congratulate you on becoming president of the commission and thanks for letting me come and just sit and listen. I'm very proud to be from Montague County, I must tell you that.
We're, we're very delighted to have you here. General public comments, any comments from the public? No comments from the public? Do I have a motion?
Move for adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion adjourned and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned. Posed, motion carried. We are adjourned.